Julia, she always stays there.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Do we have anyone here for the new stereo lines? Dale, would you like to pinch hit?
Sure.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for this day, thankful for life, thankful for the blessings we enjoy, thankful for the great country in which we live and the opportunity that we have to be able to lift our voices and to speak what we have upon our hearts. We ask for guidance and we know that we face so many difficulties in our world today. And yet, we know that you're in charge, you're in control, and we believe that obviously you are the answer. And we just pray that you might help us tonight and not only tonight, but in days ahead. That decisions made would be for the betterment of our community through Christ our prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Like the order, open a meeting with a pledge. Stan, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have five public hearings tonight. Start the first one as a public hearing and a first reading regarding an enhanced enterprise zone property tax abatement. John?
Yeah, let me review this for you and then, of course, we'll have a public hearing. Mike Patel is here and Mike is the owner of the Fairfield Inn and can certainly answer any questions that the council might have. For a little history, because the enhanced enterprise zone was enacted in 2009 by the Rolla City Council and something that we have not seen a lot of, there's only this project and Hartman who have been the two qualifying companies who have applied for the tax abatement program under the enhanced enterprise zone. So Rolla was the 79th out of now 135 cities and counties that have adopted an enterprise zone. It was really created as a way for distressed communities. We actually had to declare a blight over the entire community in order to qualify for this, filed that with DED. And participation in the enhanced enterprise zone gives you, gives qualifying businesses by statute, a 50% tax abatement for 10 years and then cities can adopt these regulations that would provide additional abatement or more terms based on some qualifying factors. When it was originally formed, the enhanced enterprise zone, there was also a state tax credit that came along. And so that was really the motivation. There was both local tax abatement and a state tax credit that could be given to these qualifying businesses. The state has not funded the tax credit program for the last number of years and so that's really not an issue. It's really just a local tax abatement program. So the city council adopted resolution number 1705 in December of 2009. The enhanced enterprise zone is a 25-year program. And in our resolution, which is in your packet, it identifies the types of NAICS codes and NAICS stands for North American Industry Classification System. It's a way of really identifying every type of business that you could possibly think of. And in this case, we identified maybe eight or 10 classifications of qualifying industry that would qualify for that. So when we adopted this in 2009, the city did a public hearing. We had formed an enhanced enterprise zone board. That board has seven members on it, including a representative from the Rolla Public School District and a representative from other taxing jurisdictions, and then five appointments that were made by the city council. Those included current members Dale Martins, Larry Stratman, Don Morris, Doug Cresswell, Sue Daly representing Rolla Public Schools, Keith Strassner, and a vacancy on Ted Day's passing. So that was the enhanced enterprise zone. I don't think there's many, any turnover in that board over those number of years. Their job is to have recommended to the council the provisions of the enhanced enterprise zone and the various increments of benefit and then to review annually our statement that we have to file with DED. So we do have an annual meeting with the EED to review that, but there's not been much activity, as I said, in this program. So hasn't been a lot for that committee to do. There is some gray area in the statutes. It talks about in order to use enhanced enterprise zone, you have to have a public hearing, but it's just, that's all it says. And so in consulting with Gilmore and Bell, our special counsel attorneys on a lot of economic development issues, they said even DED has conflicting messages. It's not absolutely clear that we have to pose, we had to pose a public hearing for this purpose, to use this qualifying use, but there's enough gray there that we thought it was prudent to do so. So we have sent notices to all the taxing jurisdictions. We posted notice for this public hearing and an opportunity for the public to weigh on this particular project. In the application that Fairfield Inn has filed, they do qualify for in excess of $5 million in capital investment, which was the value, one of the threshold values for construction, and 17 full-time employees, which qualifies for the 15 full-time employee increment. So rather than just being qualifying for the minimum tax abatement, 50% for 10 years, they actually qualify for 65% tax abatement for 10 years. Looking at the current assessed valuation, and Nathan was asking some really great questions which had us sort of reviewing, let's make sure the council understands the fiscal impact of that. So it was worth doing some review of that. So Fairfield Inn's property currently, and this was really pre-development, was assessed in 2021 at $113,000. Taxes paid were $5,682. That's a pre-development assessed valuation. The county assessor has not established the 2022 assessed valuation, so we're still waiting to find out what that's going to be. But a adjoining hotel site, a relatively new hotel site, has an assessed valuation of $979,000. So let me say that again. So the vacant property where this hotel site was, was $113,000 in assessed valuation. A adjoining hotel has assessed valuation of $979,000. Put that into taxes, the undeveloped site was paid taxes of $5,682. The existing hotel adjacent to it paid taxes of about $50,000. If that other hotel had been a qualifying enhanced enterprise zone and it built before we adopted ours, that's why it's not, at 65% tax abatement, the Fairfield will be paying somewhere around $17,000 in taxes. Current undeveloped property, $5,600 in taxes. Post-development with 65% tax abatement, about $17,500. And again, I'm using that based on comparable hotels. The assessor will establish those values based on the number of square footage and all kinds of factors. So those numbers can certainly change. Another good question that Nathan had for me was just how do we then allocate property taxes? Approximately 73 to 71 to 75% of our property taxes go to the R-31 school district. The city receives somewhere between 10 and 15% in property taxes, the county about 8, 9% in property taxes, and then we have a couple miscellaneous jurisdictions. There's a Roden Bridge, there's a, well, library would have that. Yeah, the library, although that's actually rolled into the city's portion of it. There's a disabilities board, has a small increment, that's about 7%. So you can see how those dollars are distributed to those entities. When we sent a letter to the taxing jurisdictions, the only one I heard from was a call from the school district, just asking for an explanation. They hadn't seen any activity on the enhanced enterprise zone and they just wanted to understand what was taking place. And in the public hearing, perhaps there's representatives from those entities that would like to comment on all of this to the city council. So with that, what we have in the packet for you then is an ordinance, and that ordinance really approves an agreement between the city council and Fidelity, I'm sorry, Fairfield, known as Chris Hotel LLC. And it really lays out the expectations that as long as it stays an operating hotel, it will qualify, as long as they maintain at least 15 employees, it will qualify for that additional increment. But we want to lay out some provision that if they happen to sell to something other than a hotel, or if they drop employment below 15, that lowers than that annual tax abatement determination. So we thought it was prudent to have that formally adopted by the council. Gilmore Bell recommended we do that. I think it has some merit because it lays out again those expectations for the next 10 years of this tax abatement. So ran through that really quick. Happy to answer any questions and then we'll give an opportunity for the public hearing and then if Mike has any particular comments he'd like to offer, he could. So the question was, does the 15 full-time employees have to reside here in Rolla or some of them are remote? They have to be working at that facility, but they don't have to reside in the city of Rolla. They can, they would be, 15 full-time employees, they actually have 17, working at that facility in Rolla, but of course, limited to Rolla residents. They could be coming from anywhere to take those jobs, but physically there.
Any other council questions for now?
So was this, was this orig, you said that this was for blighted properties and communities that were in that group? And this is 2009 that this was adopted by the council, correct?
Yes.
What does the state have to do with this?
The state formed the enhanced enterprise zone program and then allowed cities to participate in it. So like you can look at the statutes and it's under, oh, what was it, 135, yeah, chapter 135.
The point I was getting to, there's no state money.
No, there was, originally it was formed with a tax credit for the state, but they haven't funded the tax credit. So there is no state benefit, but it is still a state-recognized program authorized that way and then cities are allowed, cities and counties are allowed to participate in it. So we have to register and we had filed all of that paperwork at the state to qualify. And that's why we have to provide the state, Department of Economic Development, an annual report as to the utilization of the program.
I have a question. Does this all affect like the chamber tax that they get for a percentage of people who stay in hotels that goes towards the Chamber of Commerce?
No, so this is just real property taxes. It's not the hotel taxes, not sales taxes, not even personal property tax. So they'll pay full personal property taxes like everyone else. And again, the majority of that goes to the school district. So this is just the real property tax for that facility.
Is personal property tax consisting of the furnishings?
Yes.
The value of the beds and the generators.
Personal property inside. And if you're looking at your packet on Roman numer A or 1A17, that's the beginning of the two-page resolution passed in 2009. And it identifies on the bottom of that page, the qualifying industries, and it would qualify if they're construction manufacturing, wholesale, transportation, professional scientific technical services. But the interesting one was this accommodations. An accommodation that category 72 is hotels specifically exempting food and drinking establishments. At the time, I can remember that was discussed by the committee and discussed by the council at the time. The thought was if we encouraged hotels, it would lend the community to a better chance for a conferencing center. And the Chamber of Commerce has been a big advocate of trying to get into conferencing in this area. But this project isn't a conferencing project. But that was what was the rationale at the time for the enhanced enterprise zone to recommend that and for the city council to include accommodations in here. Other retail are specifically exempted from this. So there are, under the law, there's very specific commercial enterprises that don't qualify for enhanced enterprise zone. It's just these related industry. And then I would draw your attention to the next page on Roman numer 1A18. I think one of the key clauses of that resolution is in the middle of that page under the be it further resolved. And this is what, every city that I looked at adopted this language, but it says be it further resolved that any business enterprise within the above itemized NAICS code located within the proposed zone, which in Rolla is the entire city limits, and meeting the requirements of chapter 135, will receive a minimum of 50% reduction of ad valorem tax abatement on new improvements or more based on private investment. And then the next page is the amendment where we added the opportunity for additional increment based on wages, number of employees, and investment. So those three pages comprise of the resolution that was adopted. This will all expire in December 2034. And I did send a note to DED today saying, just if the question came from council, do we have to continue and let this run 25 years? They have, it's not gotten back to me, so I don't know that. Council has the right to review this. They can have the enhanced enterprise zone board review this and I think can amend it, but we have to file all that back with DED. So I just don't have a clear answer what an amendment to an enhanced enterprise zone looks like at this point.
When we do, if we are able, I think we would certainly take that opportunity to have an internal review to see if this all still makes sense. I think conceptually as a program, it does, but I think, you know, time changes and that's a long time to go by, so we will probably put a little work into reexamining the effectiveness of it.
Now would this Fairfield Inn only be eligible until 2032? Are they only eligible for 10 years to do this? Do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. But then the entire program potentially ends in 2034, is what you're saying?
Correct.
I'll circle back for council questions and discussions, but in the meantime, let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this particular ordinance? Please come forward. Unlike a property zoning, I'm not going to do the for or against, so if anybody just wants to say something, please come.
What are the?
Excuse me, if you have, since this is a public hearing, please give the clerk your name and address.
My name is Mark Regnier Reigne. I live outside of the city of limits of Rolla. I was curious what kind of symbolism interpretations this hotel place has that is you're bringing into Rolla and what it means.
I'm not so sure I understand it, so let me.
Many businesses have a symbolism and culture that choose different symbols for different meanings, and sometimes they have hidden meanings. Have you researched into all the hidden meanings of different?
I think the short answer to that is no. This program is meant as an economic development tool, one of many tools that economic developers and community people utilize. Effectively, it's targeted to encourage a particular type of business or businesses, but it's all driven by employment. You know, at the end of the day, what you're trying to do is to stimulate growth and employment, and I think that's essentially where we stop. I don't think we get into cultural issues. Not so sure they have a place.
Oh, you're not so sure they have a place? Then why do we have need for any psychologist or anybody to study psychology or anything like that? They have used all kinds of symbology every single day. It's just like they use it to harass people every single day. And so are you really sure you shouldn't be studying into this stuff? Because it affects people's thoughts and actions, because actions proceed to follow thoughts and emotions. And if the people are being harassed, well, people might change their actions because of being harassed, and then they might change their actions more than once or repeatedly if they're continually being harassed and harassed and harassed and harassed. And there's a thing called post-traumatic, they call it a disorder, but post-traumatic. Somebody who's continually being harassed with thoughts, whether it's from their own thoughts or whether it's from other people around them, whether they be humans or not humans, somebody getting harassed constantly is more likely to get upset on a regular basis. And so maybe you should really consider things like symbolism and the psychology that what you're doing and accepting here and not just about the funds. There's more things about than just merely the funds.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to city council on this topic? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions before we have the first reading? Lance, can you read the first reading?
An ordinance approving an enhanced enterprise zone project and authorizing the city of Rolla, Missouri to enter into an enhanced enterprise zone agreement with Chris Hotel LLC.
The next public hearing is to authorize the vacation of the remainder of Spring Street north of 13th Street.
Okay, yes, this is a vacation, it's actually portions of 13th Street and also Spring Street and also an alley. This is a map of the area. You notice I've got the right-of-way and road for the new Tim Bradley Way that's under construction also shown on here. And basically, you should be pretty clear what's going on or why this area isn't needed. Basically, the university has purchased all the property in this area except for the Dairy Queen, which is the 1303 building. And so the desire is to vacate these streets as they're no longer needed to serve that area. And in the short term, the university is planning to build a parking lot in that area. So just to summarize, there are some utilities in the streets and the alley easements we are trained as a part of this vacation over that area because of right now, there's no plan to relocate any of those utilities. Haven't received any objections from the utility providers and these streets are no longer needed for access or circulation. Planning and zoning commission took a look at this and they did recommend approval of the request, a vote of six to zero. Do you have any questions for me before we move to the public hearing?
Any questions for Tom?
Oh, I should say, I did advertise this for a public hearing because they are vacating actual active streets. We don't, for easements and things like that, we don't do a public hearing, but if it's an active street, like to do that.
Thanks, Tom. Like to officially open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to city council regarding this vacation? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any council discussion before the first reading? First reading, please.
An ordinance approving the vacation of the remainder of Spring Street north of 13th Street. A portion of 13th Street between Spring Street and Bishop Avenue and the remainder of an alley between Spring Street and Bishop Avenue and 13th Street and University Drive.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing and first reading to authorize the vacation of the remainder of State Street north of 11th Street.
This is, yes, a request for vacation of the rest of State Street. You see on the maps, the area that's highlighted, also in the vicinity of the new Tim Bradley Way and the roundabout. This is related to the welcome entryway into the university, the project related to all that. This map shows where this area falls on the university's campus master plan, just giving the idea, as I said, basically they're working on a new entryway and whatnot. And so this, as a roadway, this area is not to be needed. You can also see kind of on there that their plans are to sort of retain this area as a more of a pedestrian access way, but it would be able to serve for fire access if needed. So just to summarize, there are utilities in the street. However, the university is working to relocate those outside of the street so there wouldn't be when they get done with this project. So we are not retaining an easement as part of this vacation. There isn't any objection from the utility providers. The street is no longer needed for access and circulation as they build this new entryway into the university. However, there is a need for emergency access and that will be provided in the final design. The university and the fire department are working together on how that will be achieved. The planning and zoning commission took a look at this and they did recommend approval of the request, the vote of six to zero. Do you have any questions for me before we move to the public hearing?
Questions for Tom? If not, we'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to city council regarding the vacation of the remainder of State Street north of 11th Street? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any council questions before the first reading? First reading, please.
An ordinance approving the vacation of the remainder of State Street north of 11th Street. Now, therefore be it resolved, ordained, oh, sorry. I didn't have to read that part. That's not part of the title. Went too far.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing and a first reading to allow the rezoning of 1306 Highway 72 from C1 to C2.
Yes, this is a request for rezoning, this is Highway 72 East. The area map shows the property. This is kind of an open piece of property adjacent to the car mart. In fact, car mart is the applicant on this rezoning. The car mart is seeking to lease a portion of this property from the property owner and they're looking to build a used car display area on that area, so essentially a paved area. They want to call it parking lot because it's really just to display cars that are for sale. However, the property is zoned C1, which is neighborhood commercial, and C1 does not allow for a car dealership. The car mart adjacent to this property be rezoned is zone C2, which is general retail, and that is what is requested for this property. C2 does allow for a car dealership. This is a street view, as I said, it's adjacent to the car mart. It's the open field in between the car mart and the adjacent business. Just to summarize, the comprehensive plan designates this area as being appropriate for neighborhood and community commercial uses. It's two different things. Neighborhood commercial would be more of what it's zoned currently, but community commercial would be more of what the request is, so it kind of has both in that area and on this property, in fact. It is adjacent to C2 zoning, which is what is being requested. This vicinity is kind of a little bit odd in that there's kind of a mixture of commercial uses. You have C1, C2, and C3 all in this area along Highway 72. If the rezoning is approved, it would allow for the applicant sought use of a car sales display area. Planning and zoning commission took a look at this and they did recommend approval with the vote of six to zero. Do you have any questions for me before we move to the public hearing?
Tom, I think I know the answer to this, but let's just assume for a second that the car dealership goes away. This rezoning on this lot would permanently allow anything under C2, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Tom?
My only thought was the, how that is considered for the, there seems to be R1 behind that?
Yes.
So it's right now C1, but that'll actually bump up against R1 properties, though. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, I mean, is that visible? I mean, is that pretty covered to where they wouldn't necessarily be seeing car lots right in their backyard at that point?
Yeah, so I guess two things. Number one, there is a hedgerow. Go to the street, you can kind of see on there if it's on your TV. There's a hedgerow between the, and that's really the best screening. It's a nice grown, older growth, a bunch of trees at the property line. So in general, when they go to develop it, what we've kind of worked out is, so we don't want them to tear those trees down and then plant some new trees and fence. So we worked out is there's some areas where you could see through it, so they've agreed to plant some evergreens kind of in those areas to sort of balance it out. And then two, this actual parking lot is proposed more toward Highway 72, so it wouldn't be right next to these houses. But of course, somebody could redevelop the property however they desired. Would point out that on the southern end, next to the actual houses, there is a detention pond, so it would be a bit difficult to develop right next to the houses.
I do have a question.
Yes, sure.
If I understood you correctly, the car mart is only leasing a portion or wanting to lease a portion for a parking lot. Is there a reason that you would, that we would rezon the entire section as opposed to just a portion to try and lease?
It is an option. I can't remember the exact distance I had on the planning zoning report as one of their options, but it is an option.
But then wouldn't you have a mixed zoning in that portion, that lot for that owner?
It's all over town.
Well, but I'm just saying, aren't we trying to put ourselves in a position where that's not as prevalent or not?
The point that I would make is the applicant didn't request that. Sure. It's certainly a possibility, but if the applicant requests the entire parcel, we don't generally approve it. Tell them.
By the same token, you need to make your decision that it's everything and anything under C2 regardless of whether there's a car lot there or not.
And so far, we haven't received any input from anybody adjacent.
Just mentioned, it's just interesting how it works on this map, but if you look on the
on the colored map that's on the screen, right across the street is the C3 zoning. I think that's the Toons Garage. And the council, when they requested rezoning, did preserve that northernmost part as R3 to give a buffer between that commercial and the residential. I don't think that was the request of the applicant. At that time, the council felt like that was a way of preserving some of that penetration. So not essential, but probably something that could be done to preserve the C1 on that southern boundary of the proposed property. But typically, we look for the applicant to initiate that and then council has the right to amend as they think appropriate.
So just to clarify, do we go to down the southern end here, number 19, number 20? Do we go to those homes and drop a piece of paper off in their front door? Do we just hope that they read the paper and follow along? I'm just curious.
Yeah, all property owners within 300 feet receive a letter.
That's good to, that's good to know because people need to understand.
We enhanced a few years ago our signage, too, did we not?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the posted signing, which used to be a little piece of paper that half the time blew off, is more roleless today.
Gotcha. Just to clarify that for people that live adjacent to that, they do have an opportunity to come in.
Yeah, I mean, the issue I would have is that even if they're aware of it, this whole idea of it goes to C2, it's anything under that, I don't know that, you know, somebody there may conceptualize what that might look like, you know? So anyway, I think it's good for people to have an opportunity to understand what all this means.
Tom, those letters go to the property owner or the resident?
Just the property owner.
Okay. I will circle back to council, but in the interim, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone like, would like to speak regarding the rezoning of 1306 Highway 72? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion by council? If not, the first reading, please.
An ordinance to approve the rezoning of 1306 Highway 72 East from the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to the C2 General Retail District.
Next item is a public hearing to solicit input on the proposed text amendment in Chapter 42 pertaining to homeless shelters and related issues.
Yes, this is a proposed text amendment to the zoning code pertaining to homeless shelters. This is only advertised for a public hearing tonight, or we're only planning to have a public hearing tonight. Depending on the direction received from the council, they may bring forward an ordinance or whatever is directed. So right now, it's just a public hearing, not a first reading. So currently, the zoning code does not talk about homeless shelters, and so that's made it a bit difficult to administer, what, how to handle, especially now at Rala has, currently has a homeless shelter. It's made it a bit difficult. The proposed amendments would allow, would allow for the homeless shelters in some zoning districts. It would require a conditional use permit. If they were to locate in some other zoning districts, it would outright prohibit them in other zoning districts. This amendment also would add some requirements for the operations, for how they, how these types of uses operate. There are currently some organizations in Rala, there's some churches that do some things. There is also, of course, most visibly, the Rala Mission, what most people talk about. However, this code is not intended to just be about the Rala Mission, encompasses some other different types of uses and also if somebody else were to come to town to want to try to do one of these services. However, the Rala Mission does intend to expand or relocate their services, and so having these types of regulations would allow us to be able to give clearer direction on where and if they could do those things. And as I said, other organizations may come in to seek to provide these services. Homelessness is an issue in just about every city, probably every city, I mean. Larger cities in general, they attract more because of the access to jobs and services. Larger, they attract them for the same reason that people move to larger cities, the seek of, seeking opportunities. There was done a point in time count in Phelps County. They do this in every county in the country, and they try to, every year, try to figure out how many homeless people there are. And they came up with 44 people in January 2021 in Phelps County. Now, this is just folks that they can count who are actively in a shelter and ones that they know about who are unhoused, out and about, so it's, they may not get everybody. There's generally a consensus that that's probably not how many homeless people there are in Phelps County. Anecdotally, we've heard people say that probably, that number is probably closer to 100. And then later on in the presentation, I've sort of based a lot of things off of the 100 number as kind of, that may be closer to the worst-case scenario. This is a map showing what I could find for homeless shelters in Missouri. As you can see, they're kind of spread out over the state. Many are in bigger cities, but there are a good number that are in cities that are the size of Rala or smaller. Also notable, so where I got this from is if you just type in homeless shelters in Missouri, there's sites that try to direct people to where they can get help. Rala was not on those sites because, I assume, because Rala does not provide a real shelter like overnight. They have, they're open at night time for people to stay there at night, but they don't have beds or provide housing. So as we go through this discussion, there are some things that you can do and there's some things you cannot do. One of the things you cannot do is directly or indirectly prohibit homeless shelters from operating everywhere in the city. You can't just disband them and you can't make it to where, say you have a one-mile radius around everything so there's no site inside Rala that they could locate. You cannot prohibit churches from practicing their faith. Many homeless shelters are kind of done as a, as an extension of churches. And so if they are doing that as a part of practicing their faith, you can't actually keep them from doing that. You can, however, impose some reasonable restrictions and/or conditions to mitigate the impacts that these uses can cause. You can, within reason, restrict the locations that they go, so that you could prohibit from certain locations and allow it in other locations. So there has been some discussion about crime in relation to the homeless issue, and I think it's kind of important because it's actually probably the central reason why we're here. The mission and where it's located has caused a lot of people to be concerned about what's happening in that area. And if there wasn't these concerns, we wouldn't be quite so needed to get into some of these regulations. And so one of the things that the mission themselves has put out, and I verified with the police department, is that about 1.67% of all police calls in 2021 were related to homeless persons. So what the police department has been doing for the last little over a year has been, they've been trying to keep tally of when they interact with somebody who's homeless. So this will be if somebody calls the police and says, this person's doing something, they go over there and they, either it's a person they know to be homeless or in amongst that, their conversation, they find out that they're a homeless person. So it wouldn't even, this wouldn't be necessarily all of the instances when the police make contact with a homeless person, but it's the ones that they were able to make tally of in 2021. Now, the, what this adds up to is about 577 total, of the total calls in the city in 2021. 280 of those calls were at the mission or around the mission, so that could be somebody just driving by and seeing something funny happening outside, and they'd say it's at the mission, so they'd go there. It might not have been in the mission, or the mission might not have called them, but it'd be in that general vicinity. And then 297 of them were in other locations in the city. So you notice that's roughly half at the mission. Now, the problem is, when you go and you do the math on this, 1.67% of all police calls, assuming that there are 100 homeless people, which that may be the top-end number, the number might be actually less, that actually represents a rate of about three to four times the number of calls per person compared to the average person in Rala. So an average homeless person requires, is contacted by the police three or four times more than other people in Rala. Now, I should also say that a, just because they are contacted by the police doesn't mean that a crime necessarily took place. That averages out to about 5.77 if it's 100 people per person, so between five and six per person. On the other hand, there has been a lot of discussion about how they relate to crime in Rala. So I was able to find this data, and what I put together was a three-year running average crime rate for the city based on this time span. Yes?
What do you mean by crime rate? There's 100 different crime categories, if you will. What are we looking at?
So what this is, is the city reports certain crimes to the FBI, and all cities report these crimes to the FBI. They're divided into eight categories. There are more of, the more, well, there's theft also, but it's the violent crimes and types of theft, basically.
Typically called Part 1 crimes, is what we file that.
Yes, yes.
So those are considered dangerous crimes?
Well, I don't know if I consider theft to be a dangerous crime, really, but... But anyway, so I put together a three-year running average because if you look at the, every year, it's, it can be up one year and down one year, and so it's hard to make out a trend. So you do a three-year running average and you can start to see some trends. One thing is 2010 is an important year because that is when the Rala Mission began their operations. When they began their operations, the city was already in a pretty good decline in crime rates. And 2016 is an important year because that's when they began to allow the overnight stays. And so that might have been when people were more attracted to come to Rala, per se. And it took a few years before, but in recent years, the crime rate has gone up a bit. That also may coincide with the general national increase in the amount, number of homeless people. And anecdotally, people kind of say that it feels like there are more homeless people in the last couple of years than there were previously. However, I don't know that we can draw any conclusions from this. So to say that the homeless situation is driven, the crime rate, or affected the crime rate, it doesn't seem to be terribly tied to it, or can't really prove that it's tied to it. So we are proposing a text amendment to the zoning code. There are some definitions. So first, there's got a definition for an emergency shelter, and that's more than be something that's, something that'd be more temporary, think of if there was to be a tornado or something like that went through and we needed to set up a place for people to stay quickly. Also included the domestic violence shelter in that definition. And then there's the overnight shelter. This would be what you'd think of as a homeless shelter where people would go and stay there overnight, but it'd be one that is basically operated year-round. There's transitional housing. That'd be a type of housing that's kind of a transition between somebody being homeless and somebody finding permanent housing. It's basically kind of a place that they kind of put them into for, could be months at a time. And then we, something we call the soup kitchen, that would be something that primarily just serves food or provides services for homeless people, but only allows for the overnight shelter during certain times of the year when it's extra cold or extra hot or the weather is really bad. It's only, only temporarily. And then the code would allow or not allow or allow with conditional use permit these four types of uses in the different districts. This table sort of summarizes it. However, we did find during the planning and zoning meeting that there is kind of a problem with the table versus the text. And so emergency shelter, it says is permitted in all those commercial districts, but it appears that since the C1 Neighborhood Commercial didn't actually carry forward the uses in the CO Commercial Office District, that the way the ordinance, or the proposed text is written, it didn't carry forward the emergency shelter. That was an oversight. But either way, we kind of need some kind of direction on which uses we want to allow these districts, which districts we want to allow these uses in. So depending on how that works out, we can modify the text to do that. Then the proposed text has various requirements on overnight shelters and the other two. Requirements such as an operations plan that is reviewed by the police department and the city staff, require them to keep a log of patrons so we know who is there, requiring them to run a background check on their patrons, requires a distance from other shelters so we don't have, if we were to have more than one, want to locate to Rala so we wouldn't have them all kind of together. You want, kind of want to spread that out just a little bit so you don't kind of have a part of town that's overrun. Requires a distance from schools, playgrounds, and daycares, and that's kind of to mirror the requirements that are in the state statutes for people who are released on this, what's the word I'm looking for?
Sex registry department.
Yeah, the registry. They basically would keep them away from there so you wouldn't really have to worry about whether or not patrons were on the registry or not. Requires that proprietors not allow drugs or alcohol on premises. Requires that they have security cameras at the entries to monitor who's coming and going. Talks about parking, but it basically says they just need to provide adequate parking. And the reason for that is, we really have no idea how to say how much parking they need to provide, so they just need to provide enough for everybody. And if they're not providing enough, then we'd say they're in violation of that. And then it also requires there to be annual inspections and a fee to cover the cost of those inspections. Then some requirements for soup kitchens, basically it also requires an operations plan, requires some screening for outdoor areas, also says no drugs or alcohol on premises, also requires security cameras, says same thing about parking and same thing about inspections and a fee. And then there's transitional housing, and basically what it says is just, you can't have facilities, got to be a distance apart from each other, once again, just to keep from them all congregating together. So as you kind of gathered, as we go through this text amendment, there are basically, there are three areas we got to kind of figure out, is that the definitions of these uses and what zoning districts they're going to locate, be located in, and what special requirements for these uses would apply no matter where they go. So did want to sort of summarize, there are kind of, there are two sides to this conversation that are very polar opposite from one another. And we've noticed that on one side, they seem to think that the city's not working with them, and the other side, they seem to think that they're working too close with the other side. And so it seems like we've found a good ground for neutrality between the two because it's really, we're trying to just bring forward a text amendment to try to deal with this issue. On the one hand, homeless shelters do provide assistance to people who are in need of assistance, and that's kind of important to also point out because for those types of uses, you've got to have a pretty good reason to regulate them because their type of use is trying to help the community. It's not just a profit-driven thing. And then on the other side, homeless services can have impacts to surrounding properties. And we've had many, many complaints about, from the people who own properties around the Rala Mission, for example. I can't, I couldn't name, if I had to, any other business or land use in town that we get complaints on, but the Mission, we've had a lot. And also, just in thinking about this, I think it's important that everyone remembers that, I think we all actually have the same goal. The goal is to reduce the number of homeless people in Rala. Coming at it from completely opposite directions, but I think if we just remember that we all actually have the same goal, that'll help us move forward. The planning and zoning commission did take a look at this. They recommended with a vote of six to zero that the city council not pass the text as is presented, but they didn't provide any recommendations on how to modify the text to be in a way that they would recommend approval. You do have some alternatives. As you go through this, you can direct staff to withdraw this proposed amendment and, you know, not do anything with it. We can direct staff to prepare some sort of ordinance to bring forward for you to approve. We can, you can make some recommended changes to the text, to an ordinance to bring forward. Or if you need some more time or input, you can postpone action to allow for that input and figure out what type of input you'd like. Do you have any questions for me before we move to the public hearing?
I do have a question.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's go through a little administration stuff here first. Let's, let's go through a little administration stuff here first. One, if council can direct their questions very specifically to Tom dealing with the proposed text, we will have the public hearing and then come back for council to have additional questions and discussions. However, citizen or citizens group has retained legal counsel on this particular issue, which means the city now has potential legal exposure. So with that, some of our subsequent discussions will probably be in closed session because of that legal exposure. Any questions or discussions you have now or after the public hearing? I would ask that you pause between the question and the answer to give Lance a chance to say whether or not we should defer to it for a subsequent closed session. So with that.
Okay. I was just going to ask you, Tom, since you were, since you were giving off some statistics, you gave off 2021, you said there was 280 calls directly at the homeless shelter that we have now at the mission, which that requires two officers per call and 42 minutes per officer. Since you do have statistics, can you tell me what, what that cost would be to the city with our police resources? What do you think that amount would total? Do you, do you have that information?
I definitely don't have it in front of me. It sounds like a math question.
It is. It definitely is.
So if somebody has a calculator, he might, should be able to figure that out pretty quickly.
Or we could have the chief look at that and remind that as well.
Something tells me that question's been asked a few times and the answer given, so.
I think it's a good, a good, a good thing to know how much the city, how much we use of our resources and how much of our funds we're using directly there.
Any other questions for Tom relative to the text?
I do. One of the pages that you showed us was where each of the different emergency shelter, transitional housing, overnight shelters, soup kitchens, where they would be permitted. And you mentioned.
There we go.
You, you mentioned, I think specifically with the emergency shelter on the top, there was a difference between the text of the ordinance versus what this table is showing.
Yes.
What is, what is the ordinance supposed to say? Is it supposed to say that the emergency shelter is permitted in all areas?
That was the intent, yes.
So the table is accurate currently, the proposed ordinance would need to be headed into that.
Correct.
Lori, I, can you bring up, a listener might've had a question there. I would assume, when you say online, you mean posted on a website or do you mean online streaming now? Listener, can you hear us?
Yeah, I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that please?
Yeah, your question about displaying and referencing the map, showing online as well, are you, when you mean online, do you mean people, for people to be able to see this now or do you, are you asking can they be posted on the website?
I'm asking, oh, I'm sorry, interrupted you. I'm asking what is, because he's referring to documents and, and diagrams and pictures and I'm not able to see those and I'm not inside the package is what I'm referring to.
Okay. You don't have these in the packet, Tom?
I don't know.
No, okay. Yeah, we will get those distributed. Any other questions for Tom before we open the public hearing?
I have one more.
Yes.
It seemed to me, reading the ordinance, that there's quite a bit of detail on overnight shelters and soup kitchens and, and I'm, if I miss something, forgive me, but the emergency shelter and transitional housing, we basically have a definition with no restrictions or regulations of any kind. Is that correct or?
It's mentioned in some of the zoning districts, but, but yeah, it'd be much, much less proposed restriction.
Well, okay, so do you know of any restriction on emergency shelter other than the definitions that they sell?
Other than the zoning districts, no, there's nothing proposed, proposed for how they operate, if that's what you're asking.
So if there is no rules about how they operate, then what is the point of even having it mentioned in the ordinance? What purpose does that serve?
Yeah, just to clarify, this is not an ordinance. An ordinance hasn't been prepared yet. I know it's semantics, but.
Oh, no, no, I appreciate that.
Okay. I think the question, let me, let me, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but I think the emphasis is much more directed to defining what an overnight shelter and a soup kitchen is. And in doing that, focusing and narrowing down on that, you sort of have to mention the others. So I, I sort of think it was by design because there are shelters in the city limits that are, I don't want to name names. They're not homeless shelters and I don't think, I think we wanted to be careful not to capture them in the same definition. Does that state it correctly?
Yeah, I'd be correct. I mean, and as I said, as you the example of, say, we had a tornado come through and take out an area of Rolla and Red Cross came and set up a, a shelter that needed to be up for six months while people's were rebuilding. Wouldn't want that to be classified as a, as a homeless shelter and, and fall under the same requirements. It's, it's different.
Okay. So a good example of what I was trying to say is the Russell House, for instance, would fall under the definition of emergency shelter. But there's nothing defining what an emergency is.
That's correct. Yeah. And, and that's the kind of thing, you know, we can flush out that kind of definition a bit more. We were really thinking about emergency shelters really being Red Cross shelters. We've got four or five of those already around town. We added the domestic shelter of, of Russell House under that definition to distinguish it from the more transitory. So there are some nuances that are a little bit challenging trying to flush this out, but emergency shelters by their true definition, best way to think of them is the Red Cross emergency shelters opening up for a disaster. You may want to tighten that up a little bit more, but then the fair question, and we've heard this at P N Z and others, is what we're really saying, facilities for victims of domestic violence fall sort of under the emergency shelter. And that's, there's some, there's some ambiguity in that. So we don't have a great answer for that.
I would also suggest, part of the reason that we discussed some of that language was because you can try and you can only be so successful when you're describing what something is, but the other side of it is you can, you can advance that understanding a lot by describing what it is not as well. And we were trying to make clear what is and what is, is not captured in overnight shelters.
You know, I think about this topic from this perspective and, and more than anything, I guess my question is, should we focus on the location first? Talk about that component, even though we do have to define each one of these. It's kind of the cart before the horse. I think the biggest problem we're having is individuals in the community can't decide what area any of these entities should be allowed in. They feel like, you know, not in my neighborhood or maybe they should be in my neighborhood. So should we spend more time working on the location versus the restrictions? Should we talk about locations first? But then if we don't, I, it's, it's a challenge because ultimately the people that I talk to are concerned about the location more than anything. And I think that's the biggest point of contention that I'm finding. The definition of each one of these entities is going to change, I'm sure, as we work through the different definitions, but it's important to understand that the constituents in our community are worried about the location first.
I think you even have one more fundamental decision before that, and that is, do you want to address the location? You know, there's a group of citizens out there that have been pretty clear that they do not think that we should be drafting an ordinance to allow a shelter in any of the categories. I, I assume because if you allow it, then it'll happen. If you don't allow it, then maybe it doesn't happen. I'm, I'm not sure, but I think that's, that's the very first step. What does council really want to do?
Well, you, you look at what it says, the city can restrict where they operate. I, I think that's an important part to mitigate the impact on our community. I think we have an obligation, it's no different than living on 10th Street like I do and someone wanting to put a gas station next to me. I think we have the ordinance or the zoning to, to keep that from happening. So we need to look at the different areas of our community where we allow certain activities to occur or permitted and, and look at it from that perspective.
Look, I said this before and I'll say it again, the homeless issue is very, very broad, very, very complex. And most of the related issues to homelessness, the city cannot do a damn thing about. That's a cold, hard reality and I don't think that's quite been accepted as reality in the community, but it is. The two areas that we are on our best set of footings, if you will, one is enforcement. If there's a crime committed, then we have the legal wherewithal to address the crime that's been committed. The second category is what this is, and that is the city has some authority under land use regulations to in fact do what this text is attempting to do in whatever format it is. But again, there are people in the community that are suggesting effectively that we do nothing. So council's going to have to first come to that answer. And then if you come to that answer and say, yes, we really should have some role into where a shelter will go, then that sends us down a particular path.
I think the people in the community feel that way because they feel as though administration hasn't done anything this whole time with the issues that have currently been out there.
I resent that.
And so, I mean, it is what it is.
I respectfully resent that. I think the city has done what we have been legally able to do.
But there are codes that haven't been enforced for years. So that's, that's where people are getting this.
We did an assessment last week, John could elaborate, but I think we found one very, very minor thing from what you told me today that could be corrected. So if, if, if somebody's out there thinking that we've turned a blind eye to a whole bunch of things, that's apparently not true.
That would add another, that they've also apparently expanded the stays than what we have administratively granted.
Right.
So that would have to be addressed.
So that has to be addressed either way.
Right.
The fact that what was, I don't want to say agreed upon, but sort of agreed upon.
Administratively.
Administratively determined is probably a better way to put it. May now not be applicable. So that's going to have to come back either way, regardless of what you decide to do with this.
Right.
If an administration, administrative determination had been made a while ago, can a different, possibly opposite administrative determination be made going forward? Can policy change over time?
Yeah, I would say so, but subject to then grandfathering. I mean, the, you can't just arbitrarily change the rules on an enterprise. So if they were operating under one provision, you can't just sort of say, oh, we're going to change that and now you have to change what you're operating. So they would, they would still fall under a grandfathering whether it was a zoning code amendment that the council adopts new or a formal determination. So yes, but I'd put a qualifier on it.
Speaking, speaking from city hall, I, I think to rely on an administrative decision by somebody in planning and zoning, people come and go, situations change, public policy changes, that's really not the way to administer this. So I think the proper way is with a proper procedure, proper definitions, so that everybody clearly understands this is what's allowed and this is what's not allowed. So you then put city staff into a position of implementing and enforcing as opposed to put cities, as opposed to putting staff in a position where they're subjectively having to decide something. I think that's, I think that's where we would like some clarity from city hall's perspective.
And you mentioned being grandfathered in, but you also mentioned how they've changed their procedures. So how can you be grandfathered in if you've restructured?
Operations wouldn't really be affected by that. That's not a, that's not a zoning determination.
So if you restructure or grow or anything like that, then away from the agreement that you all had or that they had with administration, if you sway from that, that doesn't?
It doesn't necessarily. It would just have, it would depend on the specifics. I mean, so that, no, they couldn't enlarge the operation, the size of the footprint, but they could change all kinds of internal operations.
Outside of the original agreement?
Yeah, because we wouldn't really be weighing in on operational issues. Without, without, I mean, that's not staff's role to set administrative requirements on it. If an ordinance had been adopted, then that would provide a structure for operations, limited, but potentially, but.
Can the city council ask administration to provide us with black and white, written down what they're saying was morally agreed to?
Yeah.
So we could see what supposedly is having the force of ordinance without being an ordinance, which is what it's, I mean, I don't know.
We're preparing a white paper that we will bring back in two years, in two weeks.
Sounds like what.
No, but, but we are, we are going back to the very beginning and recreating the events in the timeline, so we will come back in two weeks and say, this is what's transpired over time.
So I, I want to ask Tom a question and, and this is not meant to be caustic at all. I really just want to understand goals. So you made two statements that I'd like to reconcile. One of the statements you made was that everybody on each sides have the same goal of reducing homelessness.
Reducing the number of homeless people in Rolla.
Reducing the number of homeless people in Rolla. And then I also heard a statement that one entity is looking to relocate and expand. That seems to be in conflict. Now, I'm not trying to be caustic, I'm just trying to understand, like if you're expanding, you're growing your operation, so.
Yeah, I, I would say they probably aren't serving everyone they could serve at their current, with the current size. I think it'd be the way to bring that together. Overcapacity with, with the current facilities.
To clarify, I, I think you're focusing on the wrong thing. He's not, they're not wanting to increase the number of homeless people.
No, I understand. I, yeah, I do very well understand that. But I'm just saying, I watched the movie Field of Dreams and they said build it and they went on. So that's all I'm saying, so.
One thing I did also figure out in amongst all this, so if there are a hundred homeless people, I think we agree that probably is closer to the topper, top end and probably closer to the real number than 44. That's, that represents 0.5% of the population of Rolla. That number is, it's really about in line with other cities. You compare to Springfield and I compared to Columbia and started trying to compare. St. Louis is a little hard to compare because St. Louis is kind of a little different in the way they are, but in Kansas City, it's, it's not statistically different from, from that, so just throwing that out there.
Why don't we open a public hearing? Maybe somebody will have a revelation for us. And then we'll come back and you can hash it out some more. We'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
Dale Wands, here in Rolla, 606 Penny Lane. I have mixed emotions. I have some firm convictions, some suggestions today. Had a young lady from Jeff City, works here, wanted to rent one of my apartments. One of the first questions was, is it safe here? I wanted to say if you are a concealed and carry person, it is very safe. I have it all the time. It's over on 1707, 1705 North Olive. It's a thoroughfare from up where they gamble and stuff at the. It's a thoroughfare from up where they gamble and stuff at the filling station to Schuman Park. It is sleeping here all the time, almost every night, every day. It is astronomical what's happening to our city today. I ask a question. Why are we having this discussion on a homeless shelter? If what is happening downtown where the Ralla Mission is, is operating according to code, according to everything else, then why are we talking about it? It suggests to me that the Ralla Mission is operating without city approval, without city supervision. I ask, how many people can stay there overnight? How many nights can they stay? So far, I've not gotten an answer. I was told the other day by one of the people that stayed there, is there were probably 50 people spending the night there. He said, there's not enough beds, refiners, so to speak. They, they mark out a place for them to sleep on the floor. I think the Ralla Mission is doing a disfavor for inviting people, encouraging people, now they don't specifically invite them, okay? But it is well-known that the Ralla Mission is here. We have mentally impaired people. We have those who could work, don't want to work, a lot, a lot of situations there. Some suggest that Ralla is big enough for a homeless shelter. I don't mind helping people, homeless people, but I think Steelville, Rock, Bland, Bell, Licking, I don't think I should have to support their homeless people that they come here. Just like the Southern Warrior. I don't know about you, but I certainly don't appreciate them just letting them come in without supervision, without guidelines, et cetera, et cetera. The Ralla Mission claims that 79% of their clientele is from Phelps County. Hardly anybody believes that. They are residents now, but only after they come and get IDs and stuff from the mission. The Ralla Mission, one of their articles states that over 40 churches and civic groups support the mission. Just on a humorous note, the other day I went to the Phelps County Commissioners, and one of the gentlemen said, there are several churches that support the mission. A little bit later on, I said, there are three churches that support the mission. He said, what? I says, you said several, and you can't prove it. I said three, and I can't prove it. So I called, started calling some churches. So far, I found one that supported the mission, but after explaining some things, that church had withdrawn their support. I would like to challenge, there's 40 or 50, I don't know how many churches there are, but there's 12 council people. I'd like to challenge the council people to take, choose four churches. If one, somebody on the council would volunteer to head that up, to check our churches. I find it interesting, why are most of the, many of the churches that I've called don't support? They support Grace. 19 churches are contributing, supporting churches. I don't find, I've yet to find one church who will own up to supporting the mission. We are philosophically differ in those areas. I would like to encourage the city council to have town hall meeting in your jurisdiction. I think you're gonna find a whole lot of people who are not willing to speak up at the council meeting, but would at that meeting. I hear people say, it's a complicated issue. My opinion is, if you are pro-Ralla, pro-business, pro-landlord, I don't think it's a complicated situation. I'm suggesting that we do not allow it to be in C, C, C1, C2, or C3. Now, the question comes back is, where can they go? But I think, first of all, we need to support our businesses, support our landlords, and support Ralla. And I think the vast majority of Ralla would agree with that. Homeless shelters for Ralla, are we wanting it for, to enhance Ralla? Is it something that's going to benefit Ralla? If it's for our citizens, that's one thing. I do not believe that we should have a homeless shelter for people from Steelville or anyplace else. If you vote for, and again, I find it interesting with, with some of the stats. I think I would disagree a little bit with some of the stats that was presented tonight. I would like to find out more. Again, stats, if you're for a homeless shelter, your stats are gonna be one way. If you are anti, so to speak, homeless shelter, I'm not, I'm not against homeless shelters, but I think what was happening in our city certainly has disrupted. And the vast majority of the citizens, I think you would find, they would be, would not be supportive of it. So I'd like to challenge you to check with the churches, check with your constituencies, find out where they stand. I think they're gonna stand with the businesses and realize that our, there's a person has a, has a, has a building, cannot sell because of the situation. When you look at the cost to the police department, I would say that's a small amount of cost compared to the businesses and landlords. That's a small amount. The problem with the, with the police department, it doesn't, it doesn't come out of their pocket, it comes out of our pocket. But with my rentals, it comes directly out of my pocket. And with the businesses, it comes directly out of their pocket. So I think we need to be very careful as to creating a ordinance, a zone, that will hinder the growth. And if you talk about the crime statistics, I would interest you that 85 or more percent of Ralla, their fear of going downtown, their fear of going anyplace, post office, anything else, has increased 90%. People are afraid, and it's sad, that we can't go down to the post office, we can't go downtown, we can't go someplace without somebody doing it. So we have created our own problem, somebody, not me, I don't think, but somebody has. And so, what's the issue? What's the problem? What's the solution? Thank you.
Hey Dale, before you leave, if you can, you know, normally, public hearings aren't intended to be interactive, but you're a longtime resident, you're a pastor, you're a businessperson, you're a landlord, and so you've been seeing and dealing with the homeless issue for a long time. So I'd like to ask you a question. Since, over the last couple of weeks and a month since we've put this text out there, some of the feedback from the citizens was very expected, okay, quite frankly. Other information has been perplexing a bit, and unexpected, at least in my mind, because on one hand, what we're told is, we don't want an ordinance, but in the next breath, fix the problem. And I've listened to you in the past, planning and zoning and here, and even within your verbiage, there's some inconsistency. So I don't want to get you to be defensive about that. I'm gonna come around to a specific point here. So the real question is, in your mind, should the city have any ordinance whatsoever to determine where a homeless shelter goes? And forget the mission for a second, because any one of those 40 churches, or, or people that practice in those churches can start a ministry. Those churches can start a ministry, the parishioners can start a ministry, so forget the ministry, the mission for a second. We could have more homeless shelters tomorrow. So the question is, should we have something that if and when that day comes, there is some management, if you will, on where they go? Or are you saying we really shouldn't have any ordinance whatsoever? Because I can't, I can't figure that one out.
Okay, let me ask you this now.
No, 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 no. You don't answer a question with a question.
Okay. Should we have an ordinance?
Yes. Should we have an ordinance that, forget how the words are written, but should we have an ordinance that determines where a homeless shelter could be?
I would say probably so, yes.
Okay, so you're favorable to that?
Right.
Okay. So what then you're not quite favorable to is perhaps, at least in the proposed text, those specific zoning classifications that are listed.
Right.
Okay, that's good. So, do you think your opinion is common with others in the business community?
Oh, definitely.
Okay, so then...
I don't think you're gonna find many people, businesses or other people, who are in favor of C, C, C1, C2, C3.
So the business community recognizes that, I'm not putting words in your mouth is the question, that homeless shelters either exist or could exist, and the city should have some influence on where they go, but preferably not in any of the C zones. Is that, would that summarize your position? Okay, so would that suggest residential areas?
I would not be in favor of residential, no.
Okay, so then on the other end of the spectrum, that would be manufacturing areas?
Well, I, let me, let me put it this way. I would prefer not C, C, C1, C2, or C3, however, however then it comes out where the mission can go, that would be up to the city council.
We write an ordinance that puts it in a residential area, it's gonna be a line out the door.
Right. No, I'm, I'm not in favor of residential area.
Okay. So you're in favor of us managing the location, so now it's just a question of where?
Well, if you don't, then you got what you have now.
Right.
And, and I don't think we want what we have now.
Okay, I got it. That's what I was asking.
Okay. Because right now, it's unregulated, as far as I know. It's unsupervised. There's no, originally, it would be, my opinion is, if you're coming in and wanting to establish something and you have no zone, then first of all, you need to establish a zone in order to put a place in a proper place. They are not in a proper place, in my opinion.
Okay, so now I'm putting words in your mouth, then your advice to the city council would be, work with the text, but don't throw it in the trash.
Yeah, as long as you don't, as long as you don't put it in C1, C, C1, C2, or C3, wherever you like.
All right, now I understand your position.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to be the city council? I thought there was another gentleman there.
Mark Regnier, outside of Ralla. Some of the comments that were spoken by him and some of the other guys, well, and things that have...
Sir, just, just so you understand, and I would've said this to Dale, but he's been here a lot of times before, but if you could keep your comments to three to five minutes.
Three to five minutes? Okay.
I'll, I'll look at the clock.
If you listen to certain advice, well, there's certain advice in a certain book that talks about scattering the wicked, it's from the Bible, it's in Proverbs. And also, it talks about taking the poor into your own house. And that implies that in residential. And to ban the poor from being in residential zones is essentially one thing that happened in Germany during World War II. So some people might have the concern of, are you creating ghettos? Are you trying to bring in ostriches or something like that? And so, and when you have cops drive people out of town because they were, because the person happened to be, like, I, during January, I felt I was being sexually harassed because of the video that the person who was operating the mission was put on display. I pulled the plug, so I didn't have to listen to it. And I got threatened to be killed because I pulled the plug on a TV. By a black guy. And then I also got threatened to be killed by a white guy because he wanted to listen to that perverted filth, sexual abominable filth. And so, me and that white guy got, told we could, had to be out, and that was, oh, it was frosting. And so, when it's in, in the winter, and, okay, it's, you're already being awake 16 hours, so your body gets really tired, and then so...
Yeah, sir, can you, can you take the conversation back to the text of the document? Either for or against, or some suggested changes?
Well, well, if you have manufacturing, if you put it in your manufacturing, something like that in your manufacturing, it might make it easier for said persons, poor people, to get the employment they need if you have a manufacturing that's, they're ready to employ them. Some of the, it being homelessness is a factor of not being hired by people. If you're not hired by people, then you just don't have the funds to rent, period. Some of it's, well, if you don't get hired, you, you don't have the funds to do what you want to do.
Yeah, about one more minute.
And as far as operations, there's certain operations of certain religious groups, certain Sunday keeping religious groups, well, have been reported to increase crime rates. William Tindale commented on that, that there was a certain religious group that was increasing the crime rates by how they operated. And so, there are, might be wise to consider operations. Are they getting good words? Is, and there's, there's a saying, you are what you eat, and then there's another saying, it's input, output. It's just like, depending upon what you put in, has an impact on what is the outcome.
Yeah, about 15 seconds.
So, and then also, those good, bad company creps good manners. And therefore, if you want these, a lot of these poor people to have better opportunity to become better people, it would be good for them to have better company.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to city council? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record in three to five minutes if you can.
Dustin Lindsay. I live inside town. I just wanna...
What was your name?
Dustin Lindsay.
Oh, Dustin.
D U S T, yes. And to me, it just seems like we have one. Seems like you guys gotta come to an agreeance here. Sounds like an ordinance is probably gonna have to be in play. Sympathize with you, Gail. We all know the negative effects of having one, but also it's here, so it seems like we have a problem. So I just want to commend you guys, come up with what you think is best. And we have it, so I'm assuming we're gonna put it somewhere pretty decent. If we have to move it, awesome, but you guys, it is very complicated, so I just wanted to let you guys know that you got a big thing on your table, and I'll be, I'll be coming just to hear what's going on and pass the word around. There are a lot of people concerned about the homelessness and the drugs that are coming on, but it's here. You guys are gonna have to tackle the problem, so... are coming on, but it's here. You guys are gonna have to tackle the problem, so, good luck.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Council comments, discussions, and again, pause between question and answer, so it's good digestion.
For me, I would like to see, you said in two weeks, we're gonna have a white paper. You'll have something, kind of a chronology, and so, I'll be, I'll be anxious to see that.
Yeah, that would be, as far as using the current ordinances vis-à-vis what the mission is currently doing.
Yes. I think, I think that'll be very helpful.
Yes.
The other thing is, I know there's a lot of people in the community who were not aware that this was a public hearing tonight. I had a few people reach out to me today, and they're like, man, I did not know that was happening tonight. So, I don't know if there's a way for us to publicize that, maybe continue this public hearing to next time?
That's what I would like to see, too. I would like to-
I don't have, I don't have anything against keeping a public hearing open, but I think if it's gonna be fruitful, it's best if the public is commenting regarding some specifics. I mean, look, and I don't, I don't mean to, I don't mean to play this down. There are a lot of things associated with homelessness. Property damage that's been occurring, perceived safety issues. We get all that, and I don't know that there's much to be gained by continuing to hear that. I think we're in the phase now where I think that, um, the citizens need to provide you some specific feedback to specific things, if we're gonna move the ball downfield to use a sports analogy.
I don't know if there's a way to open up some communication between the businesses, and kinda get an idea of what some of the businesses in Rolla are wanting, get an idea of what maybe some churches, what some individuals, some mental health professionals, and maybe get some impact, information from a variety of people, and see if they can come back with a conclusion. Almost like a task force idea.
Yeah. Mariah, I'm all for that, but I'm not supportive of a committee just yet. And the reason being of, you know, if somebody's proposed a committee, a committee to be efficient, effective, and productive has to have a pretty specific charter. I mean, what is it specifically you wanna talk about to get there? I don't know that we're there yet, number one. Number two, I think the community has to provide feedback to a specific document. And that's out there, right? This, this document has been out there for a while, and if you all wanna tweak it a little bit more and let the, the, the community react to that, I think that's very appropriate. I believe we can keep the public hearing open, so we can do that.
Okay.
But again, for, to just keep it open, to have more folks come in to say basically the same thing, I'm not so sure that's gonna get-
Yeah, I just think some people were not aware that tonight was the night to bring tweaks to our, to us. I don't think that there were some people that knew that. So, I think that keeping it open is a good idea.
Well, Andrew's a pretty thorough guy, so I'm sure he's gonna do a pretty good job in the newspaper with this. We can keep the public hearing open. The, the question is, what do you want to do? So, there's the do nothing, meaning we don't pursue any ordinance. There is the option of saying, hey, city hall, go back and do some of these tweaks, this, that, the other thing. Or the third option is to just sleep on it for two weeks, and then we come back and have another discussion. But it could very well be that that next discussion is in closed session. It is likely to be in closed session.
I would like to, as Matt stated, to discuss the location issue of, of the ordinance first. I think we need to, we, I mean, that's, that's been all the feedback that I've gotten, and I've expressed that before as well, that, um, we need to work on the location.
I think that's the heart and soul of them, I mean, to talk about a whole lot of other things that we can't really do much, anything about is gonna be a waste of time. So, I think, I, I think you're right. If the community, if the community is looking for the city to use its statutory authority to decide where homeless shelters will be, then this is the, this is what we should be doing.
And I do, even though I do agree with keeping the, the public comment open, um, you, you do make a great point, Mayor, with the fact that we've had so many different opportunities to voice our opinions on it. So, I would like to go forward to getting this thing going and, and discussing the, the major issues with the ordinance.
Okay, so with that, what I would challenge is, think, do your homework, but in two weeks, when we come back in a closed session, the focus should be on those locations.
That's not a closed session this year.
I was gonna ask that. Why is it a closed session?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we got a, we got, we got a law firm already out there.
The question of, of what is legal and whether it is not legal is-
Be more principled than specific. You're not gonna be able to say, we're agreeing in C two, or conditional C, that's, that's, that's not the issue. But the legal ramifications of not doing it, or putting it in certain zones, is. I'm just saying, we can't, we're not gonna resolve it in closed session and then have that detailed.
You can have a discussion of what sections, but you can't say a specific location.
Okay, so do we wanna have, in two weeks-
In closed session.
A closed session, because we always have closed sessions at the end. Do we wanna have a closed session to understand the legal ramifications, and then right behind that, in open session, have a discussion?
We can, we can do that, and we, and we could even do the closed session an hour early, if we wanted to do it sort of at the beginning of the meeting, so that we were able to go into the regular flow of the meeting. So, coupled this point. It's, it's hard to have a regular meeting, go into closed session, you exempt everybody from the room, and then take back up business. That's a difficult way of doing it, so, um, my suggestion would go in a closed session, understand the legal ramifications of adopting zoning regulations, in closed session, and then come back in two weeks from there and have detail.
But, but, at the risk of saying too much, didn't we already do that two weeks ago?
We did, but it was, I think it was a month ago, and I think it was before we heard sort of the public hearing comments here at APNZ.
Okay.
So, I think that all sinks in a little more, the, the more you hear it.
Okay, so in two weeks, we have a white paper on the existing, um, operations of the mission, and we have a closed session to understand the legal ramifications of what we could, could not.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Um, is there a way to initially kind of wait on this ordinance, and instead just address location, and wait on this, um, the rest of the ordinance until that is implemented?
So, essentially, separate the two.
Yes, that's-
Well, you really have three. I think you need two, okay? You need the definitions. You, you can't put anything in place if you don't have a definition. So, it's the definition and the location. The third thing in the ordinance, or this text document, is to address what I'll call operational issues. I think you can put that aside.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, maybe-
But some of you made it pretty clear that they went hand in hand, so it's your decision. So, it's locations, definitions is a must, location, if you wanna tackle it, and then you can put operational issues on the side, if that's what you want.
My personal thing is, I think we should get moving with, at least with the definition and location side of this, as soon as possible, and maybe hold off on the others right now.
Don't look over here for the answer, Jared. I mean, I'm looking at you, not up, not sideways.
Well, no, I, I actually wanna agree that the definitions and locations have to go hand in hand.
Yeah.
Because I don't, without knowing what it is we're locating, then, I mean, are we locating a pond or a homeless shelter? Well, what's a homeless shelter? We have to define a homeless shelter. So, I, I think location and, and definitions go together, and the specifics of restrictions, I could definitely see how you would put that out or figuring out your definitions. I, I do, in addition to what was just said, since, um, I was wondering if we could add to, uh, the closed session, if we're going to have one in two weeks, um, discussing the legal ramifications of the concept of grandfathering in, which I think is indicated by the white paper that you're preparing, because I think there are gonna be some legal, uh, advised issues that come from the white paper. So, will we be able to discuss that in two weeks, or is that not enough time?
I, I think so. I think it's part of this discussion. So, I think we can talk about the legal ramifications, grandfathering becomes a, a very important piece of what we're doing, so, as long as we keep it general, so general litigate, you know, legal issues, I think we're okay.
We got our marching orders, so we'll keep the public hearing open for an indefinite period of time.
Just, I think, just, Lance is, I don't know if it's necessary to make a motion to retake, to keep a public hearing open?
It would be, just to make the record clear.
Yeah, I think we, otherwise, we could argue, we have to re-advertise some of those kinds of things.
Ask for a motion to a public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mariah, is her second?
I'll say.
Second by Terry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Acknowledgements or special presentations? We do not have any. We have one item under old business, which is an ordinance allowing the rezoning of 1898 Old St. James Road.
Okay, we talked about this at the last meeting and the meeting before that, so just remind you which property this is. This is on Old St. James Road. It's that lease area for, uh, proposed cell tower on this property. The request is to rezone to the M two, M one, Light Manufacturing Zoning District. So, to summarize, the conference plan does designate this area as being appropriate for industrial uses. It's adjacent to property that's zoned to M two. The property was formally zoned to M two. It was rezoned to allow for the businesses on the property currently. And, uh, the M one district does not have a height limit, whereas the C three district does have a height limit. This was, uh, placed as a requirement for the conditional use permit that the city council approved related to the cell tower. Planning Zoning Commission took a look at this, and they recommended an approval through a vote of seven to zero. Uh, you've already held the public hearing and whatnot, so we just left off at the deliberations, I believe. Uh, the ordinance was tweaked a little bit based on, uh, some desk discussions to just clarify that some lands, the landscape buffer, uh, between the, in the, if it's approved, the industrial zoning and the commercial zoning, um, just tweaked that that would be required.
Tom, let me make sure I understand that. We have a single property, a single property owner that will have split zoning, and we want a buffer between the two zoning within one piece of property owned by the same person?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and council can exempt that, but that's what the ordinance states.
That's fine.
Yeah.
By any chance, is the owner here?
Yes. The owner, the owner and, and the representative.
But he or she wanna come up and just address how you feel about that?
Mayor, my name is Barry Dunn. I do live in Rolla. Uh, concerning that buffering, it doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, uh, it would, one, it would interfere with my business that I have now. It's, it, if you take away, put about ten feet of buffering on my property, that mean I have less places to park my cars. Uh, currently, right now, I'm, um, I'm getting very, very busy. I need that space. So, and the buffer doesn't mean, it doesn't do anything other than take up space. So, I don't understand why is, that will be a problem. Uh, but to me, it won't be a problem if you, if you don't do it, but it will be a problem if you do, so.
Just, just a little clarification, because you've got a lease boundary, and it requires the buffer between, um, this new proposed development and the existing. So, landscaping would have to be on the inside of that fencing. That landscaping wouldn't be on property that you retain, that the leaseholder doesn't have. So, it's a fair point that you're suggesting, council, and council can remove that restriction, but the landscaping is not gonna have, is not gonna be outside of the boundaries of the rezoned properties, it's gonna have to be within the-
Recording, stop. Recording in progress.
Okay, the, oh, okay.
Wait, wait, I don't know where that came from.
Something happened here? I didn't touch it. I did. Well, I'm looking to do a little bit more, um, things in that, inside that property. I have, uh, another business I want to actually put in that property. So, to actually take up some of that space, it'll probably interfere with the business that I want to actually put in that property, so.
Yeah, and so, again, council can exempt that, and it's certainly a reasonable request on your part. I'm just saying, the landscaping would have to be within the boundaries of this leased property, not, not extending over into the unleased portion of that property.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I understand.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so any questions for Tom?
I just wanted to clarify what was said. Um, he was concerned that the buffer zone would be on his side of the property, but that was not the requirement. It was that that buffer would be inside the lease side of the property.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was just clarifying.
Which is nonusable space.
Thank you. Which is nonusable for him anyway.
I understood that as well, but if the gentleman would come back, because he-
I think he said he was gonna do a business in that area.
Yeah, can you clarify, sir, what, what you said after the fact?
What's the question?
Okay, so, all right, so, we clarified initially, that was the, the buffer you said would impact where you can plant, park your cars. So, we clarified, it says, well, that's sort of not true. It'll be on the cell tower side of the line, so to speak. But then you went on to say that you have other intentions of that property. Can you kind of explain that again?
Yes, the cell tower, uh, person is only leasing a, a portion of that property. They're not leasing the whole thing. So, it, it leaves, uh, uh, room for other development in that area. So, if you actually put a buffer, it would take away some of that space, uh, that, uh, that I have in mind to put something else there. So, if you put that buffer up there, so.
A question I have, okay, so, if inside the leased portion, it's all within the leased portion, would you sometime with a new adventure, use some of that leased portion?
Yes. Well, no, not their portion, because, because they're not leasing the complete area, the total area.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, I think we're, we're getting confused here. Let me, let me, we got a square.
It's a triangle.
CP's got that image up there.
Yeah, we have a triangle.
No, 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 let me do it.
It's a triangle.
It's a triangle, not a square.
It is a triangle.
There's a square. You own the square.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna lease a portion to somebody else, okay? And this imaginary line that goes down through the square could require a buffer, which would be on their side of the line.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so that's, that's what is. But now you're suggesting that you may have a need for space that that buffer is going to take up. Is that what you're saying?
Now, if you, if you go past their portion, okay, so, if it does not go past their portion, uh, it won't affect me.
Right, but that's what John clarified, but then you came back and said-
Now, if you put a buffer up there, that's fine. They would take care of it. I don't know how to worry about it. So, um, so if that's what you wanna do, that's fine, you know, but just, just listen to what they got to say concerning how much space they need. Uh, but, uh, I'm not worrying about their side, I'm worrying about my side.
Okay, but, but your side is defined by the lease, I assume. You and, you and them have some sort of agreement that this imaginary line now is drawn?
Yes.
So, any buffer requirement is gonna be on their side?
Okay. That's fine. I have no problem with that.
Okay, that's what I was clarifying.
I'm gonna pause to see if you come back and say something else.
So, yeah.
Okay, we're clear?
We're clear?
Yeah, I, I think, I think what John said was, was, was-
I don't think we're clear.
We're clear. We're good?
So, and within that square, the imaginary square that the mayor's talking about, so, they'll have their line that's leased, and then you'll, you'll still have part of the square, which will then be rezoned, and that will, you'll have a new venture there? Is that what we're talking about?
The other side.
No, that's not what-
Just the leased properties, you're sorry.
I think you're saying if it's-
So, we're concerned about with the buffer, right? Yes.
So, I, I agree. I don't think you're clear. I think there's two things that are going on. I think to make it clear, do you want a buffer there or not?
I don't care.
Okay, you don't care whether there's a buffer there, or don't care?
No, no, I don't, I don't care if that's a buffer, that's as long as it's not going only to my property.
Right. The reason that I'm, we don't think that you were making clear is, we were getting into- Reason that I'm, don't think that you were being clear is, we were getting into who it was going to affect. And ultimately, he has all of the property outside the red triangle. That buffer primarily benefits him because that's the property that is closest to the changing zone. So saying, I think he was saying he doesn't care if you want to put a buffer there.
Right.
I get that. Question is, does he want a buffer there because the buffer is intended to benefit him? Or do we want to put a buffer there because it needs to be changed so that it is aesthetically more pleasing? There's separate issues.
Why do we want a, I can see if you want landscaping along the front edge of people's seat, but I'm not so sure I understand why we want a buffer on the backside of the property.
Is the buffer due to our ordinance?
The ordinance, the ordinance says that there shall be.
So that's why you want it?
A buffer.
Yes.
It can be waived if the property owner doesn't want the buffer there.
And council agrees.
And council agrees. That's what I was trying to get to, was a question of whether or not, he wants a buffer there because you guys get to decide if you want a buffer there and he can sound off on whether he wants a buffer there.
So the question is, do I want a buffer there?
Yes.
No.
Well, you, you learn quick, don't you?
Any other questions? Ms. Megan, I'll ask you a question.
I think I got it, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
I would just add that, you know, at the last council meeting, council asked us to put a provision of the language in there for the buffering, which is a requirement of the ordinance. Council can remove that. So I just want to draw that. That's section two on Roman numeral three, A4. Section two is added since the last first reading of this ordinance, so.
So ultimately, we, ultimately, we need to remove that provision in there, section two, correct?
Correct.
In order to meet.
You don't want to require a buffer zone.
Correct, correct.
That's a request of the owner.
So how do we, how do we get that accomplished?
Just a motion.
Just make, so make a motion or strike section two at the request of the owner. I make that motion?
Okay.
Three, A4.
Three, A2.
Can I add just a nuance before we, do we want something between the street and?
So the front of it.
For the front of it?
Yep.
For aesthetics from driving by.
In the conditional use ordinance that the council adopted, if I remember right, Tom might recall this, we required, I think, a slatted, so they have to put the slats in the fence that was the buffer. We did not put a landscaping requirement.
Gotcha.
Now, council could do that, but there's nothing in an ordinance that otherwise would have imposed that.
So if we remove section two entirely?
Not two entirely.
Okay.
No.
Just the line between.
Correct.
Lesser.
Correct. So my motion is incorrect. Just, we need to remove the section of, section two, speak specifically to the buffer on the other portion, correct? Would that be how you would ask?
My copy only has one sentence, section two.
Section two apparently reads on page three, A4.
Right.
The property is subject to the landscape and buffering provisions of section forty-two dash two thirty of the city code. So I think if you strike that section, there's, I don't see anything else that would be affected. But it's, Roman numeral three, A4, section two.
Just to clarify, Matt, is that what you're?
Yes, correct. The property is subject to the landscape and buffering provisions of section forty-two thousand.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I, I need to clarify something because that's kind of what we're conversing. We still think that there may be misunderstanding going on here of what we're seeing as the triangle area. That would be the news newly zoned into an M1 area. What we're understanding, what he's actually saying, is that only a piece of that newly zoned M1 area would go to the cell tower for lease, and the other section is what he's talking about it being a new business venture of something else going there.
No.
That's what I thought we were understanding that to be.
That is not how I understand.
What he was referring to is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the area inside the triangle will be the cell tower that he is leasing to, or is it only a piece of that cell tower? I believe that is the leased area.
Yep.
So.
Now, they, they don't have it up on their screen.
Can we put it up on the screen so he can see it?
The entirety of the M1 area will be leased to the cell tower?
The entire piece?
The, what's in the triangle?
He doesn't, he's not seeing the triangle.
No.
No, it's up there.
It's not, he's not, it's not what he's saying.
That's not what he's saying.
It's not what he's saying.
All right, come on.
I, I think there's misunderstanding.
Sir, can you come back up and talk about this square?
Sorry, sir.
It's not a square.
Can I, can I give, can I take my, so he can see what we're talking about?
Larry, you've got a copy of that, don't you?
Okay.
Okay. I feel bad because he's not seeing what we're seeing, so.
Yeah, let me ask, again, we're getting confused here. I think there's two questions to quote Lance. One is, the gentleman wants or doesn't want a buffer? And then the second question, which is you're asking, is what is the leased property?
So that, that triangle there represents what would be?
Is that the leased property?
No, not, not this here.
Oh, not, not this here?
No, not that. We want this up.
We don't even have that.
We want it up on the screen.
The area map with the red.
Area map with the red triangle?
Yes, that's the leased property, the red triangle.
This whole thing is his.
Right.
This would be the newly zoned area.
That's going to be the M1 zone.
Yes.
And that entire M1 zone is what the cell tower's using, the entire M1 zone.
They're not going to use the whole thing.
They're not using the triangle.
Of the M1?
Yes.
Okay, they're not using the whole thing.
They're only using what they're leasing.
Yes.
Which is, that's only a piece.
No.
No.
The lease describes the area in the red triangle, correct? Can he see?
Yes. Okay, there's, there's, there's two questions here. The red triangle is what you guys are going to rezon.
Are you, are you looking at the same thing we look?
Yes.
He's got it right there.
I'm looking at that.
Is that the leased property?
That's the rezon.
Stop there. We good?
Yes.
All right. Do you want a buffer?
No.
Stop there. We clear?
I don't think so, but.
Okay.
When you, when you say the entire thing, he's thinking about the entire tract of property that he has. When, the leased area is what is described by the red triangle, and that's what they're using.
And nothing else is going in there. I think that's what Nathan's trying to say. There will not be other business going on in there.
In the newly zoned area.
Thank you.
Not the square.
Triangle, not the square. So back to the motion.
What you did with that square.
Motion to strike section two. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rob. All in favor, say, signify by saying aye. Yeah, you can.
So I, I just, I just want to clarify because I did not read all of section forty-two point two three oh, which was today's meeting. Does forty-two three oh only deal with a fence, why does the red triangle keep disappearing?
Let Lester back up.
We only see Lester.
Oh, you're wanting it back.
Does the city code, section forty-two two three oh, only deal with the common line between the leased area and the rest of the owner of the property, or does forty-two two three oh deal with landscaping requirements for all three sides of the triangle?
It would not apply to the other two sides of the triangle because the other two sides of the triangle are already zoned as manufactured.
So forty-two, so this forty-two two three oh, section two, sort of only applies to the common boundary line between.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Because it's, it's, it's what separates between C3.
Gotcha.
And the other, the manufacturing district.
Okay, I apologize.
No, the good question.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, there's a motion, second, all in favor of striking section two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Can we have the amended final reading?
As amended, an ordinance to approve the rezoning of one eight nine eight Old St. James Road from the C3 Highway Commercial District to the M1 Light Manufacturing District.
Is there a motion?
Lester has a comment. Somebody does.
Lester what?
That's not from Lester. That's from someone else.
All right, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, prefer.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Roll call vote.
Fredley?
Yes.
Hasting, Jer?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Renaud?
Yes.
Steen?
Yeah.
Mayberry?
Yes.
Chervin?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Paul?
No.
Florence?
Yay!
Was that Nate?
He said yes.
Oh, I?
Yes.
Ten eyes.
Florence is approved. Moving on to new business, first item is an ordinance authorizing the agreement with Archer Eldon for professional services.
Yes, sir. By way of review, we recently made a request for qualifications from consultants for our wastewater department. The project that we were looking for was to prepare an engineering report that would evaluate alternatives for replacement of a pressurized system that brings wastewater from High Point into the southeast river plant. We intend to use this report to secure some earmark ARPA money to provide for these improvements. We were authorized by the council to negotiate a contract, and the contract is in your package tonight. And the fee for this particular project is thirty-four thousand dollars.
Questions for Steve?
I was just curious, is there any other bids that are done for something like that? I mean, I, you know, Eldon's a really good local one, but I didn't know if that was something that is normally bid to multiple people or not.
No, it is not. Under Missouri statutes, we're required to negotiate contracts, request qualifications, pick the best firm, negotiate a contract. If we're not satisfied with that, we're always able to go to the next firm and try to negotiate a different contract.
Okay.
But just to clarify, that, that is advertised. It's a request for qualifications, and I think there were two or three firms that responded.
Four or three.
And we selected them, and then you move into the contract.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, can we have the first reading?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Rolla, Missouri to execute in behalf of the city of Rolla, Missouri, a certain agreement for professional services and task order number one between the city of Rolla, Missouri and CM Archer Group PC.
Next item is an ordinance authorizing a minor subdivision.
Lester got a question.
Lester had a question, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Lester.
Yeah, I'm looking at part five, and so as soon as a lump fee of thirty-four thousand to be invoiced monthly, I'm just making sure, that's just a one-time fee. That's not going to be monthly as a statement of, right?
Correct. It's for the task.
Yeah, one time.
Okay, so monthly invoice is just, okay.
Next item is an ordinance authorizing a minor subdivision, Wolf's Corner. Tom?
Wolf's, Wolf's Corner. Property is highlighted on the area map. Basically, there's a house on the property. The property owner owns two platted lots. The backstory to this is the property owner desires to build a pool on the property. They want to build it on that other lot that the house is not located on. However, the zoning code basically says that you can't have an accessory use on a lot separate from the primary use. So to take care of that, they're requesting to combine these two lots together to make it one big lot. Property is zoned R1, which is a single-family zoning district. So picture the plat. As I said, it basically just combines the, both those platted lots together into one big lot. So just to summarize, that's what it does, and it appears to be in compliance with all requirements. Planning and Zoning Commission took a look at this, and they did recommend approval with a vote of six to zero. Any questions for me?
There's no questions for Tom. First reading, please.
An ordinance to approve the minor subdivision final plat of Wolf's Corner.
Next item of the agenda is an ordinance authorizing a minor subdivision to combine six lots into one.
This is slightly unusual. There, the applicant is the university. They don't usually come to the city to combine lots together. They, when they buy properties, they, they own them all, so they don't, they don't have to come to us for building permits and things like that. However, they, they did decide to come this route because there are easements between each of these lot lines, and so they're also seeking to vacate those easements in between the lots as a part of this. So that's the, that's the area that is being talked about on Fraternity Circle. It's where they're seeking to relocate the General Services building to. Property is zoned GI, government institutional, because the university owns the property. This is the plat. As I said, it basically combines all these, these six lots together into one big lot. And there are, as I said, there is easements between these lots, so the request is also to vacate those easements. Combine six lots together. Easements are not needed. There are no utilities in these easements. There will be a need for them to dedicate separately some, some utility easements as a part of this development, but that'll be done separately. It appears to be in compliance with all requirements. Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission took a look at this and recommended approval of vote of six to zero. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom? If not, first reading, please.
An ordinance to approve the minor subdivision final plat of University Fraternity subdivision number three and vacating certain easements.
Thank you, Tom. Claims end or fiscal transactions? We have none. Citizens communications? We have one scheduled. Tara Peters? Tara, you're welcome to speak. If you haven't been here before, Citizen Communications, we generally hold until about three minutes.
I don't need three minutes. I just, I appreciate you guys.
You got your elevator speech?
I got the elevator speech. Tara Peters, my address is one eight three eight five, South US Highway sixty-three. I'm running for state representative for our district. For those of you that don't know, our district has been redistricted. It is now one twenty-two, includes all of Rolla and all of St. James. They do that every 10 years with the census. So you guys are very blessed in the fact that before, that territory had spread out far beyond Rolla and St. James. So you've had obviously significant growth in this area to make that district only Rolla and St. James. So I'm a small business owner. I live out sixty-three south. We own Pete's Pumpkin Patch. My husband and I both have two boys in our school system, so we definitely have a vested interest in this community. The community's been very good to us over the years, not only our business, but our family as well. So just have an interest in giving back to our community and providing, keeping our Phelps County area the great place that it is, the quality of life that it is. And so I'm just letting you know to introduce myself, and if there's any issues or concerns that you guys have, sharing those with me, I welcome that and appreciate that. So just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any other Citizen Communication? If not, Mayor, Mayor or City Council comments, we have a few. Before I ask Marcy to talk to us a little bit, the center and splash zone, two of the crown jewels of the city's facilities, 24 years ago approximately, a citizens-led group initiated a drive to replace what was then a very aging outdoor swimming pool, and also to look at building and construction, constructing what we now know today as the center or the health and recreation facility. We went to the voters twice. The voters originally voted to support a sales tax with a sunset clause, and it passed with a remarkable 63 percent. We then went back a second time to the voters to allow us to issue bonds, which bonds were issued to construct these facilities. Some were just under thirteen million dollars is what the bonds were issued for constructions. Those bonds had a 15-year life, but were actually paid off in about 13 years. Over the 20 years that has passed, the center has had close to 3 million people walk through its doors, so quite remarkable. But even more so, that facility, when you're in it, looks as good as it did the day we opened. And I think that the city staff over the years that have managed that facility has done an absolutely. has done an absolutely outstanding job with maintaining that building. I think we should all be proud of that facility for a city our size to have a facility like that, that's paid for and is in the condition that it is, is pretty remarkable, and it's not uncommon when people visit or relocate to Rolla, that that's the kind of comments that they pass on. The last couple of years, it's been under management to a third party, accompanied by the name of Power Wellness. We'll talk about a little bit of that in an upcoming workshop, but clearly they're on a path to take us to another level and overall enhance the health and recreation opportunities for the citizens. So with that, Marcy, you want to talk a little bit about the anniversary party?
Yes, thank you. I think that the twentieth anniversary flyer is in your package, so you should be able to see what we've had going on this week. We had a great ribbon cutting with the chamber this afternoon, you can see that on Facebook. Just a couple of highlights that I wanted to bring up. Friday, we're inviting all of our members to bring in as many guests as they would like, so if you guys know a member, come in with them. You can work out the whole day, we'd love to see you. This weekend, we're doing twenty percent off all of our DayPass sales, so it's a good weekend to come in, it's supposed to be hot, so it's nice and cool in there. And then Saturday, we're doing all of our group fitness classes free to anyone who wants to come in and participate. We do group fitness classes on Saturdays at nine AM and at ten AM, and this Saturday is, at nine AM will be our bar class. It's done in the group fitness room, and then followed by a pound class with several of our great group instructors. So if you're interested, we'd love to see as many people out this weekend as possible to celebrate twenty years. Like I said, we talked to the chamber this morning, and it's really fantastic for me. I actually started at the center when we opened, I was helping Mitch down in the pool, and so to see the progress that we've made over twenty years is really cool. I, you know, take it personally to see the great changes that we've made, so twenty years is great, and we'd love to see people out to help us celebrate. So any questions?
The Friday, do they have to accompany a member?
Yes.
To be a...okay, that's what I was assuming, to be a guest.
Yeah, but they can bring in as many as they want, so we'd love to see a lot of people.
There's four members at our house, you can use one.
Thanks, Marcy.
Thank you.
Let me see, any other...Mayor, any other City Council comments?
I just have, I have some citizen concerns. I was going to ask the chief a question with the recent stolen vehicles that we've had. Is there any particular reason for that uptick? I mean...
People leaving their keys in their cars. Have we stolen cars with them? We identified who's stolen them. We haven't got all the cars back, but we know where the people have lived in the past or live in now, so we have notified police departments on Park Zero Six to keep eyes out for the cars.
Okay, and so it was two just this last week, right? And then...
Yes.
Dr. Kessin? Okay.
Where all of them had the keys left in the car?
Yes.
Oh, goodness.
I don't think you should have asked that question.
I also want to say that the Rolla Town Band will have a free concert tomorrow at seven fifteen at the downtown band show. It's for Make Music Day. And then one more thing I wanted to say, the city of Rolla is having an open house on June twenty-third from four to six at Eugene Northern Hall, which I really enjoy going to those. Not a lot of people go, but it's people from all the different departments, and they talk about upcoming projects and future projects, so it's a good thing to go to.
Did you mention that's at Eugene Northern Community Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
And four to six.
Four to six, open house.
On Thursday?
Thursday.
Twenty-third, yeah.
I had a question, I think probably for the chief as well. I've had a couple people mention the panhandling between sixty-three and seventy-two, a certain group of people that seem to have different signs saying the money goes to a different thing every week, and whether or not it's legal for them to be crossing the street in between cars.
We have...
Chief, can you come up?
Yes. We have had calls on these people probably for the last four days in a row. Yesterday, one of our corporals went up and told them that they can no longer conduct business at the intersection. I don't know if they came back today or not, today or not. I was not able to get out of the office, but one time, and the one time I went there, they were not there anymore. You know, we have to be very careful in telling them that they can't panhandle, but when we ask them what they're there for, one will say we're there because a friend needs an organ transplant, another one says for a different reason, and they all say they're from different places, all of them out of the country. So the fact that they're walking, they were doing some pretty aggressive panhandling, knocking on windows and stuff, and when it gets to that, that's when we tell them they have to move along. And we told them they have to move along, so we're hoping they don't come back. If they do, we may end up having to take somebody in custody for, say, harassment if they're going and banging on windows or blocking cars from going down the road.
I observed the traffic was pretty backed up from it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thanks, Keith. There was an event this week called the Big Bam, and I want to ask John to talk about that a little bit, because some of the entities that worked extremely hard to organize that in Rolla got some really, really nice compliments, and I think they deserve to hear them.
Yeah, it was very hot last week, as we all know, and this is, the Big Bam is the second year or third year that they've done this, and this is sort of moves around the country, so lots of states host these kinds of events. This was a bike ride from Joplin to Eureka. It's a race, but not in the way you typically think of racing, it's more of a timed when you leave and arrive. We had about a hundred and fifty people registered. The Chamber of Commerce partners with Outdoor Missouri Life, who is the statewide tourism association magazine that really kind of sponsored this program. Apparently, they've got some learning curve still to figure out how best to accommodate this. We heard a lot of that comment on Thursday, but by dozens of folks that I ran into when we were playing music downtown, they could not have been more appreciative of the reception in Rolla, the volunteers, the Chamber of Commerce did an incredible job, I heard that over and over, and we finished at nine o'clock, and those girls were still out picking up picnic tables and chairs at nine o'clock at night after being there, and they were showing up at five in the morning the next day as they sent the bike riders off. So heard that over and over about, while there are some frustrations on the Big Bam ride overall, could not have been more impressed with what Rolla is offering.
Wasn't, John, did you say, was it two hundred or one fifty, two hundred range?
One fifty was the number of riders, and then they would have folks that would take their belongings, and of course, you might remember the council authorized them to camp in Burwan, something we have never done before. I think we might have done it in one scout group, so it's a little bit of a trial for all of us, and good, freed up from the parks department, said it was all cleaned up come Friday morning, so really worked out well, but they do bring along people that will help them set up tents, and I think total people were about two hundred, riders about a hundred and fifty.
I live right by the park, and I didn't even know they were there, really.
That's good.
With, you know, with camping and everything, I didn't even know they were there.
Did they have any comment about the musical entertainment?
It was fantastic. Could have said, not nice things.
Did you get any tips? All right. Any other comments when they go to the order?
I have one more comment.
Yes.
This week, Thursday, June twenty-third, at seven PM, a Phelps County citizen is showing a viewing of Two Thousand Mules at the Phelps County courthouse. This individual asked if he could use the room. He is a Phelps County resident, not a Rolla resident. If you have any, if you want any information about that, I can let you know, but it will